Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our interview tonight with Troy Martinez, candidate for county council District One. Before we get to our interview, I'd like to make a few statements about Huli Pack. Huli Pack was birthed from a shared drive to rework our system by seeking Aina-based equity-focused leadership for our Hawaii Island community. Now more than ever, we need leaders who are willing to circle back to our roots and instill real change in our community. From Kona to Kau to Hilo to Havi, the time is now to Huli the system. Conducting our interviews tonight are Mikela Okuchi and Francine Robey. Take it away.
Okay, so first Troy, why don't you start off by telling us a little bit about yourself? Tell us what some of your core values are and how you think that might, you know, influence your term and how you, you know, hold yourself as a leader? And what made you decide to run? What inspired you? And also, if you want to highlight some community projects that you've worked on or that you're particularly proud of, that would be awesome too.
Okay, that's a long list. Let's start at the beginning.
I'll remind you, yeah.
Okay, so yeah, my name is Troy Martinez. I grew up here in Ha'umaku all my life. I'm forty-seven years old. Been married for about twenty-four years. I have been a father for about twenty-two years. I think being a father, living here in this community, it's been a blessing. And having the people of this community to help us as we grow and grow through our lives, it's been really great. And I think bringing that type of values, you know, that we've been brought up with, integrity, of course, is solid here. I mean, we just, you know, we make deals with a handshake and we keep our word. Whatever we say, we do, we do. That's how we were brought up and that way we don't shame our family name or even our community. That's one of the main things that we've been brought up doing and having good parents teach us these things. So we just pass that along and share it with our community and it goes that route, yeah. I'm sorry if I don't sound like a politician, but I've got zero x zero years as a politician.
That might be a good thing.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's not.
Yeah.
So Troy, maybe you could.
I'm a working class man.
Troy, maybe you could tell us, in your experiences that you have had, you know, work or community action, anything, tell us what things you think qualify you to go for elected office and get in that whole new environment.
Yeah, definitely. I've been really happy working with the kids in the school farm down in Honaka. It's been really great in around these young people that, you know, I'm gonna remind myself, we weren't the kids that had an easy time learning in the classroom. So there's other places and I try and encourage them and let them know that there is a place for all of us, you know. We all love learning, but it's finding the way that we can teach these young individuals, you know, and really understand where they're coming from. Because just coming to school sometimes, it's a big accomplishment for these kids, you know. We don't know how hard it is and, sorry, my dog just decided to come here. Go away. And um, so just knowing that, you know, in our community, that them just showing up is a big accomplishment. So for us to understand them and be able to help them and to see, see them like really feel the love, you know, when you're teaching them and showing them that, you know, I was there. I was one of those kids, you know, during the summer programs and they're doing it and you get to teach them all the stuff that we learned and share that knowledge, agriculture, the animals, everything. It's really, it's an awesome thing. I understand now why there's so much people that are teachers. Sorry, gotta get my dog under control there. She wants to be on TV.
All right. Thank you, Troy, for that. Question from one of your constituents. If you were to get elected to the county council, which committees would you like to serve on?
Um, no, uh, I'm gonna have to really, I really, it's all new to me, so. I wouldn't really know which exact one I would like to, you know, I mean, there's, I'm sorry about that, but you know.
Okay, right, Mikela?
I would like to.
Please continue. Sorry.
No, sorry. I mean, like with me, especially if you're in Hawaii, you know, finances and all these types of things. But I'm not experienced and I don't know how these committees and how you get these spots on these things. So I really don't know how it works. And that's why I'm getting into this, so I can find out how these things work and what kind of tools we have available out there so that I can help the community, bring it back and tell them, oh, this is how it works. This is what I can do. But especially like for me, like I said, I wouldn't know how that part works, but finances. If you're like us and you're always running on a tight budget, to make it in Hawaii, you gotta know all the financial things and how to make things work, how to stretch the dollar and all that type of stuff. I mean, that's kind of right up my alley. Making things work that way. But I don't know if that answers the question, but yeah.
Troy, have you advocated in any way for your community and been involved in any community projects?
I'm pretty much, yeah, we're always doing things in the community. It's pretty, pretty amazing to have a community like this. It's awesome. It's easy. Everybody's so wonderful. But, um, you know, we spend time at the Hongunji with the program where they're doing the feeding and they make the lunches and they pass out the groceries, all that type of stuff. The Hongunji is kind of like a hub in Honaka, serving the people and meeting the needs of a lot of families. It's hard times, you know, and.
Have you been on that team there at the Hongunji?
Yeah, at the Hongunji. It's awesome. It's so fun because it's like so much different people there, all different, you know, nationalities. But everybody's got the same heart, the same motivation, you know. So you just, you get to see how much a lot of work just gets done. Everybody does their part, makes it happen. It's a beautiful thing. It's what we want to share with the rest of the country and the rest of the, hopefully the island and then the world, how it works, you know, how we do things here in Ha'umakua.
Troy, I was wondering, what do you see as some of the most pressing issues facing your district? And what are some thoughts you have about actions that can be taken to relieve some of those issues?
Well, definitely, a lot of issues kind of hit close to home. I mean, we got a lot of people that's moving away, you know, because they can't afford being here. And on the back of everybody's mind is, you know, all these properties being sold for so much, all our taxes is gonna be going really up there. That's one major concern for everybody over here, that we're gonna be able to survive. I mean, even if we're successful, working hard and paying off our properties, our children, we're thinking about all our kids and our grandkids, how are they gonna survive paying, you know, to live here? So that's one of the major pressing things and that's why we're in this is because we gotta, we gotta look forward, you know, to make this place a place to have a sustainable lifestyle, you know, our lifestyle that we have and just not let it get so out of, it seems like it's just moving too fast for everybody here to keep up with. It's like everybody's getting left behind.
Troy, could you say a little more about what you mean by sustainable? And how you see that might play out in the, in the county?
Well, in the county, I mean, just having, you know, having more of a, not so much of a hardship on all of us. I mean, it's, it's so hard just making it every day, you know. So whatever we can do to alleviate that, you know, especially with our agriculture. I mean, like for us, everybody's got paid their mortgage, everybody's got paid a few prices, everybody's got paid their taxes. I mean, the only thing that we personally can do in our, our own life and help with the neighbors is just the food part, you know. So growing and being able to provide food that's not as expensive can help a lot of people, you know. So having programs that will help do that would be a great benefit to the community. I mean, the inflation, sorry, I'm just always there, but you know, we got inflation going on, but you know, my bananas and my avocados don't cost anymore that's growing in my backyard. So if we can get that kind of mentality going and that kind of ideas, you know, that can really help people, you know. We just need more, more of it to spread around.
That's awesome. You've touched a bit about affordable housing. In regards to homelessness, you know, it's remained a problem statewide, including here on Hawaii Island. Have you thought about this? Do you have any ideas? Because I know this is a huge problem. So many people have tried to tackle. But do you have any ideas about how we might be able to come to grips with this problem?
You know, it really, when it comes to like the homeless issue, it's not like you gotta get to know and get to know these people, because it's a lot of different needs that they have. A lot of it can be because of drugs, can be because of issues that's in their lives. A lot of them, I mean, I shouldn't say a lot of them, but you know, there is mental health issues that is out there and that causes a lot of problems and it's just, you gotta be kind of like hands-on and help and know each individual to be able to help them. It's not an easy thing, but definitely it's something that we gotta be concerned about. As, you know, we did, when my kids was younger, we used to do the feeding program out in Hilo. And they used to be serving and doing those type of things and, you know, you get to know all the people there and you get to, you see them. And it's all aunties, uncles, those people, it's all someone's son, it's someone's daughter, you know what I mean? So we definitely gotta make an effort to help them, but it's gotta be where we gotta try and help them to be able to get out of that, out of that rut, you know, and see what we can do to, to help them, like ask them, what, what do they need, you know? Because a lot of times you see people get into these kind of positions, politicians, and they're like, I got the, I got the thing for this. I'm gonna fix this problem. I'm gonna do this. I'm gonna do that. And really, we need to know what those individual people need, you know, what type of help they need to be able to help them. Because just helping them get a house, if they have other issues, is not gonna help them. Yeah, we gotta really get to the, the issues, help them heal from the inside, work their way up, be successful and be able to, you know, stand on their own two feet by the end of the, whatever program that we have been, you know, for them.
Affordable, yeah. Affordable housing is such an important issue, but there seems to be a trend on Hawaii Island to rezone a lot of agricultural land for affordable housing. How do you feel about that policy?
You know, um, it just, to me, it's like affordable housing is kind of like one of those things you hear all these guys saying when it comes time for elections and stuff. And I'm like, my dad's a general contractor. We built houses. And to me, affordable housing, it's gotta be affordable. So you gotta design the house first, not design these subdivisions and then tell everybody, okay, let's see if you can afford it. I mean, because it's not, you know, it's not affordable. I mean, all our graduating date before none of this, you know. It's, it's gotta truly be affordable. It's gotta be designed in a way that maybe you just build a one-bedroom house and you can extend as they, as they, they go, you know, and can afford the next half of the house, but at least they have a home, you know. And it's just, like I said, I'm just a working class, so that's the kind of common sense ideas we have, because that's how we do it. You know, when we build our house, you build your garage, you live in it for a while and then you build the rest of the house, you know. It, it, that's just the way it goes. But what was the second half of the question?
Well, yeah, there, there seems to be a trend now to convert a lot of our agricultural land to affordable housing, to be used for affordable housing. So you'll have people that'll build estates and then part of the land will be set aside for affordable housing. Do you think that's a, a good policy or?
Not really. I, I know it seems like they're just throwing out, you know, being able to build some big subdivision or something like that and then say, we'll build this small part that's affordable for the rest of everybody. But I don't think that's really a good idea, you know.
Okay, all right, next question.
So Troy, you've talked about, you know, the, the beautiful area that we see behind you. And do you, do you have any opinions on what areas in your district or community you'd like to see protected under the 2% land fund charter amendments that have, were enacted in recent years?
Well, definitely the shorelines, yeah, but um, yeah, uh, I think all of it should be saved, truly. You know what I mean? It's kind of hard to choose. I mean, you've just seen one, one piece back here. It's like, you know, it's beautiful. Everything is beautiful and special. Every person, every, every community, you go across the coast, you got all these individual communities. And if you're gonna represent, you know, a community as big as this one, you can't really just pick and choose one. I mean, to every individual, it's, it's, it's important, yeah.
Troy, my next question has to do with Native Hawaiian rights. What do you see as some of the most pressing issues facing Native Hawaiians on Hawaii Island today? And do you have any ideas about how to combat those or how to resolve some of those issues?
Oh, as far as combating, I really, I see, you know, everybody just just hurting. Everybody needs to be put on their land, you know, as far as the Hawaiians. I mean, if you have someplace to lay your head, you know, put some shelter, you'd be all right. Right now, it's, it's, you know, it's really unfair that all these people are not on their lands, you know, growing things on their land, taking care of their families, you know, their Wahanas, being, you know, having a piece of land to call home, yeah. That's, that's what needs to happen.
So do you have a policy or program in mind that, you know, if you got on the county council, you would try to enact to bring those things about that you just mentioned?
Yeah, that would be awesome. I'm all new to this. So that's the kind of stuff that I would like to learn about, you know, and have some type of policy or program. But like I said, I'm just, I'm just this guy stepping up to, to what's right. I mean, I'm an honest man. I am, take care of my family. I'm concerned about my community and, you know, a fast learner. And I can learn these things. I just gotta find out what's the, what's the magic toolbox over there in the county that I can help all these people and, you know, learn all, all how to do these programs and stuff. But as far as having one right now, I don't, I don't have anything that I could say, honestly, you know.
Francine, would you like to ask your next question?
Um, sure. I was just wondering, you're, you know, talking about being new to this field of, you know, government and elections and you, you bring your core values and your love of the community. Have you been endorsed by any groups or individuals for your campaign or has there been any major contributors to your campaign so far?
Um, not really, just local, you know, as far as donations.
Yeah, like, you know, do you have three major contributors to your campaign so far?
Yeah, I got my, my father and my mother and that's about, you know, and one other one. But you know, if, that's the problem with these elections, yeah, it's, it's a to us, that's from the country, from Ha'umakua, it's so strange that you gotta spend so much money just to get the attention to actually get into office. And I think everybody should really look at the type of people and what is their motivation to run for this office? I have no need for money or fame or anything. I mean, I'm just one simple person right here. But definitely, the motivation is our community, our families, and trying to alleviate the pressures of what's going on now, you know, with the, our taxes and, you know, knowing what's going on in the world with the food shortages and that type of stuff, I really get on board and have some food security, some peace of mind. I mean, the biggest thing I want to bring is, you know, if I'm in there, you guys can be at peace, knowing I'm gonna do my best to take care of the people of our community, the whole island, you know. That's the, that's the plan. Sorry, did I answer that question or?
Any specifics, any specifics that would give us that peace of mind?
Well, one of them is definitely, I'm gonna, like I said, I will do my best, but using all the agricultural land we have available, uh, be more things in the ground, get things planted, using the newer technologies that we have for energy and all those types of things that we can provide. So it gives people not that worry. Because you always hear everybody when you know Hawaii, what happens when the ships stop coming, right? So we need certain things to keep running and that's the kind of things that I'm, I'm thinking about, you know, that we can implement. But as I said, like I said, it's just ideas that I can come up with until we know how we put it all together, yeah.
Troy, I was wondering, concerning our circular economy or a diversified economy, specifically in regards to tourism. It, it's kind of obvious that it will continue on our shores regardless, whether we like it or not. But do you have any ideas about how we could ensure that the tourism industry shifts a bit? So that way it becomes of service to our working families rather than the other way around? And do you have any ideas about that?
What, could you explain that a little bit more to me? What do you mean shift?
Yeah, like in the past, you know, tour, the tourism industry has all been about, you know, big profit for big companies. The companies are, are, you know, marketing for their services, whether it's airlines or resorts. And a lot of it has been at the expense of our Aina and has been at the expense of our working families. And, you know, when things happen like with COVID and tourism slows down, a lot of our working families find themselves out of work. But do you have any ideas about how we could improve tourism in general? So that way it might be of service to our working families rather than a burden to our working families?
Okay, yeah, there's a, you know, with the hotels, it's all about keeping the occupancy up, right? And um, that's what helps. I think, and, you know, I think a lot of things, it's all connected. But we need to look in a dark path of adjusting or implementing more, you know, finding a way to make it work better with like these short-term rentals and that type of stuff, because that can affect the occupancy in the hotel, yeah, as, as those things go on. And a lot of times, you know, it's just figuring out a way that we can make it work better, you know, and working at the hotel myself, you know, we know how, when big groups come in and those types of things, how it affects the, the economy. But I definitely think it's all connected. We need to look at the short-term rentals and maybe help figure out a better way. I think it takes away from the hotels and they put people in communities that wasn't really ready to have that type of thing in their community. And also, when you go to the hotel, you have those people there, like concierge, people of the hotel that can inform you and help you to know what is expected when you're on the island and how you conduct yourself. And that would alleviate a lot of the social tension that goes on on the island sometimes with tourism. Because we definitely want the tourists to feel comfortable, but a lot of times it's just misunderstanding of culture and what is seen as respectful or not, you know. So I think that would help a lot.
Thanks, Troy.
So looking at the land and keeping our land and our island beautiful and the danger that's looming over all of us because of climate change. You know, there's a lot of scientists that have come to an agreement that the year 2030 is a pretty important year for us to have gotten on board with our greenhouse emissions to get them reduced like by 50% so that we can keep things going. And I'm curious what your perspective is on that. We've had, you know, tons of, of issues that face us that are difficult, but climate change seems to be kind of a different, different from all those other issues because it's a huge, no turning back from this deadline. So what are your thoughts about getting to the, the the planned reduction of greenhouse gases by 2030? Any thoughts on that?
How much percent were they saying till 2030?
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent.
Reduced by 50%.
Okay. Well, I mean, when it comes to climate change, definitely you figure everything around us, especially here. Of course, we don't wanna be turning too much things, but methane is one of those things that's just, I think it's what is it, 20% more, you know, holds the heat in our atmosphere. And you, looking at those type of things and how we can use those type of energies, it's one of those things that come out of everything. I mean, our landfills, create mapping, our houses, you know, all those types of stuff that, you know, looking at other places that have used that type of gas and that technology to run things. We don't, we definitely wanna take down the amount of methane that goes up in the air. That's, that's a big one. But that's also looking at energy is a major, major thing that we gotta start looking at.
Do you have some proposals for that?
Well, you know, being on the coast Ha'umakua here, have you guys seen like that technology where they use the waves? And it's kind of like a blowhole type thing. And you can have the turbine inside that creates the electricity. You hear a lot of people always say, you know, solar. They'll say solar and they'll say wind-generated power, but as you can see right now, when the sun goes down, you're gonna need a battery to store all. You're gonna need a battery to store all that power from solar. And the wind stops, it's not consistent. So there's technologies where you can use the tide. Where it's kind of like a wind turbine, but it's underwater and the current is more predictable. It's always there. The waves is always there, so using that type of. Technology could really help us here and especially in Hamakua, you have the power lines going all the way across on the bottom. There's a lot of things I'm just curious why it's never brought up. But like I said, you know, it's just ideas and that's what I want to bring is like bring all these different modern technologies. And see what can we use out here, you know, and look at it seriously because. There's a lot of options that we could use and it's always. There's different applications for different places, like how I was saying with the methane gas, you have this guy in Nebraska that's a pig farmer. And he runs his pig farm, he runs his evil truck. And his tractor off the methane and he sells the power back to the power company. So different areas, you know, that would be beneficial and definitely. You just got to depend on where we're at and what kind of renewable energy we use. That would definitely cut down on. The pollution that we're putting out there.
Okay, Troy, following up on Francine's question, there's a Senate bill that's on the. Governor's veto list, it's Senate Bill twenty five ten and it prioritized firm energy, which would mean burning trash and. Possibly burning trees over renewable energy, which is what you had mentioned, wind and and solar. Do you feel that the governor should veto that bill or do you think that was a good piece of legislation that should move forward?
Burning the trash to make energy?
Trash and trees to make energy?
Yeah, I burning anything I don't think is a good idea right now. I mean, but like I said, I'm no expert, but putting more pollution out in the sky. Uh, probably doesn't sound too good. But, you know.
Thank you, Mikella.
Yes, my next question has to do with food security and agriculture. I was wondering, what is your definition of food security for Hawaii Island? And what and how would you implement programs to fulfill your statement if you're elected?
I think food security means there's something to eat, yeah. We depend on all our different resources here and we take it serious. I mean, all the animals and all the food, the trees and the plants. So as far as food security is, be securing lands that we could grow. Uh, fruit trees and grow more food, having maybe the. Places where you can process these these things. Definitely, uh. Have enough. That we can feed the whole island and maybe even the state, you know, starting programs that we can keep growing. Because a lot of times, a lot of these lands, you got to show something working by three years. And you know, fruit trees, all those type things takes a little bit longer to get going to make it profitable. So I guess that would be the type of thing that I would try and implement, something where we make it a little bit more easy for people to be farming. And maybe have. More available land that's not that big, maybe that everybody can have this and farming, you know, for their ohana. And have a little bit more that they could put together. And maybe supply with all these little farms supplying all the extra they can supply bigger places, you know, maybe the hotels. Or restaurants and that type of stuff.
Thank you.
So switching from agriculture to infrastructure. It seems like, you know, Hawaii's got some some funding that's come down from the big federal bills. To allow us to do some infrastructure improvements. Do you have any? Ideas that you think should be the priorities for how the infrastructure funding gets used by the county?
Yeah, I mean, on this coastline, we've got probably the most expensive district. It's all the bridges and all the. All the things that we have, you know, repair, a lot of roads. You know what would be really nice when they're doing these these highways and stuff, if they would. Put in tunnels. You guys been on the mountain road up here in towards Kona? You guys see the daily massacres of all these poor animals that's getting hit, you know? Uh, in the mainland, they put tunnels under the highways that where these animals travel so that they they don't cause accidents and they don't. Destroy property, you know, as far as infrastructure, I think like putting those type of things on the highways would be really nice. That would help.
So Troy, my next question kind of, we're shifting, I'm shifting gears a little. So don't get shocked. My next question has to do.
Sorry.
Sorry?
No, I was just saying, sorry, I I probably don't have the answers you guys are used to do or whatever, but you know, I'll do my best.
No, no, you're doing a great job. We said this is just talk story. We just want to hear like what your genuine thoughts and feelings are about certain things, so. And this one, my next question has to deal with social issues and I'm fully aware that. Hawaii as a state now grants more abortion rights to women compared to other states with the overturning of Roe versus Wade. But how would you help ensure that women on Hawaii Island continue to have access to birth control? And or services to terminate pregnancies as needed?
Okay, sorry, I think my son is trying to call me right now.
No, you're fine.
Hello, hello, okay, sorry about that.
Hold on, I gotta start the live stream again.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries, we can whip that up.
Yeah.
Hope your son is okay.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'll find out in a little while.
Um, did you hear my previous question before we disconnected?
Yeah, yours asking about abortion.
Yeah, like. Um, yeah, so I was going to say that, you know, Hawaii does have more abortion rates available to women with the overturning of Roe versus Wade. Compared to other states. However, how would you help ensure that women on Hawaii Island continue to have access? To family planning services, including abortion services and or contraception or birth control?
I really don't know too much about that. I know there's Planned Parenthood and they had things, you know. There for people that needed contraceptives and all that type of stuff, but. I wouldn't know how you implement more. Laws or anything of that sort.
Well, one example, one of the reasons why this has been on a lot of people's minds is because. We no longer have a Planned Parenthood office available on Hawaii Island like we did maybe twenty years ago. So getting access, although it might be technically legal, getting access to some of these services, especially for women in rural communities. Has become increasingly difficult. So, you know, perhaps opening another Planned Parenthood here or looking at opening another clinic for these types of services. Might be some ideas to look at. So I was just curious. I wanted to pick your brain about it.
No, no, you figure out, it's been a long time since I've been in school, so that's the type of programs you had way back then and, yeah. Sorry about that.
No worries, thank you.
Troy, I was wondering, you you say you, I I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you're bringing, you want to bring a fresh perspective. By not being a longtime politician already and and being a working man. From the country. I was wondering, do you have some political leaders? Who are out there now who you feel you have something in common with and who inspire you and that you have respect for?
Pretty much, I keep myself busy working, so I I got a lot of people that. In the working class that I'm I'm inspired by, you know, as far as politicians. Yeah, that's why I want to get into this, so we can bring how we were brought up to work and be honorable in what we do. Into the government because that's what we want to see. That's what our communities want to see. You know, somebody that says they're gonna do something and they actually do it and. That's the thing where a lot of us out here, we're not too much about talking, we're all about doing and. I know, um, maybe to a lot of people listening be like, uh, these guys don't know too much, but right here. Our degrees is written on our hands, our livelihood, our families, that's how we take care of them. And I really look up to my dad. I got a lot of uncles in this community that. I really look up to, you know, it's all family, it's ohana and. As far as politicians. Not my kind of working class. I mean, it's, you know, I I can't really say, I don't watch enough. Maybe I just got tired of listening to things that don't happen, yeah? That's why I want to get into this and start doing what we say and helping the people and helping the community. See what happens.
Turn it over to Jeff.
Okay, I did get one last question from one of your fellow citizens and he wanted to know. Um, whether you felt geothermal should be included in a slate of renewable energy products?
That's a rough one, yeah, I don't, I don't really. I don't think so, you know. I know it produces a lot, but it's definitely very. Yeah. Go off to go with the. Not really on that one. I think we got better options that we can do, you know, nowadays. That's all, yeah, sick with that one.
Okay, Francine or Mikella, any last questions for Troy?
Troy, I was just curious, the current council. Do you think it's it's been effective at all or is it, was there something specific? That they've done recently that really pushed you to say, I'm gonna get in there and I want to do things differently?
Well, you know. All of us who out here, you know, we're hurting, so voting and tax breaks not really happening and that type of stuff is. You know, kind of disappointing. That's what we're gonna look for, you know, so. A lot of things, but. Yeah, I mean.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Francine.
I was gonna say, you're you're running against, you know, people on the council. How do you see yourself as being the better choice?
Well, as far as this community, I'm definitely connected with everybody and that's why I'm trying to bring to the table is. You know, it's kind of like you. We know everybody, we know all their talents, we know all their, the things that everybody can do. I know people on all sides of everything, you know, so we can bring those people together to get their solutions. In our community and better serve the community. Uh, it's all about the community. I don't want to be there saying, oh, I'm gonna do this. It's all of us together. It's me getting out there, finding out what they need and then bringing that back and, you know. Helping their ways to be heard and that's the that's the biggest thing, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Troy Martinez, for joining us tonight, candidate for County Council District One. Thank you, Francine and. And Mikella for conducting our interviews. At Huli Pack, we're building something that the political establishment has never seen, a slate of Pono leaders. Your donation can help Huli the system. Please visit hulihi.com, H U L I H I dot com. For more information about Huli Pack or to make a donation. Thanks again, everyone, for joining us.
Right on, you guys. Mahalo.
Thanks, Troy. Have a great night.
Yeah, you too.